All right, I am going to start the public stream, so just to let you guys know we're going live.
So I can hit the start meeting button?
Yes.
Someone do the three, two. You can't say the one, they're always silent on that one.
Welcome to another Funville meeting.
There you go, yes. All right, I just heard that kick in.
Okay, I believe we are good to go.
Okay, we'll call to order the Malibu Planet Commission regular meeting for Monday, May 4th, 2020. I have a little script which I am supposed to read. Meetings being held by teleconference due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Obviously, we're learning as we go on this process, so thank everyone for their patience. All the planning commissioners and the staff are participating from remote locations. All votes will be taken by roll call. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to malibu city.org/virtualmeeting. At this screen, you can click on the tab to either just watch the meeting or to sign up to speak on a particular item. You will only be able to speak during the meeting if you follow the instructions on the screen under the sign, under the sign up to speak tab. Once the item is called, no further speaker signups will be allowed. So please make sure you visit malibu city.org/virtualmeeting early to download the Zoom application and sign up to speak. The recording secretary will call on those who have signed up to speak when the item is called. And so you must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. Commissioners, if you have any comments to make during the meeting, please raise your hand. I'll call on you in turn. Make sure that everybody gets a chance to say everything they want to say. Should we experience a loss of cabin pressure, an oxygen mask will descend from the cabin overhead. Grasp mask firmly and put it to your nose and mouth. Okay. Would you call the roll, Kathleen?
Commissioner Marks?
Here.
Commissioner Uring?
Here.
Commissioner Wile?
Here.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Here.
Chair Jennings?
I'm here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Next item is approval of the agenda. How about it, John? You have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to continue item 5A to May 18th and continue item 5C to June 1st.
And to approve the rest of the agenda?
And to approve the rest of the agenda.
I have one friendly amendment. Since one of the items, if we do call it, I'm recused from, I would ask if it's called, if we could move that to the tail end of the meeting?
We can do that if it's pulled.
If it's pulled, okay.
All right. I didn't realize that item 5C was going to be continued. Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, all in, we've got to do it by roll call. Kathleen, will you call the roll, please?
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Uring?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Wile?
Yes.
Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Kathleen, the next item on the agenda is the report on the posting of the agenda.
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on April 23rd, 2020.
Thank you. Item 1A, update on the planning department's operations during COVID-19 emergency declaration. Bonnie, is that you?
Yes, that's me. Good evening, everybody. I hope you're all staying safe and well. I just want to start off by thanking the, the planning department and the IT staff and the city manager's office for all of their hard work during this very strange time of being all physically separated. The IT team has done an amazing job getting these virtual meetings up and running. The planning staff has been doing a great job trying to maintain as much of a semblance of normalcy as possible, working from home and keeping all of the regular operations going. We anticipate taking in new applications once City Hall opens again. But at this point, we're focusing on fire rebuilds and existing applications and working with building safety closely to coordinate, moving things through plan check and all of those sorts of things. It's, it's been a really interesting process to kind of learn how to do all this stuff and operate. You realize how much you rely on face-to-face communication. It's especially in this business where everything is usually right in front of you with plans and meetings and conversations where you can point to stuff. I know you guys have all navigated this just in the context of these meetings so far, but it's, it's been a great learning experience, but I want to say thank you to everyone and thank you to you for your patience and understanding as we've been navigating this, this whole experience. If anyone has any questions about the planning department's operations, please visit our website and it'll give you a rundown on how everything is working. You can, anyone can contact their current case planner for updates on where, what the status is or questions. And you can contact the usual planning hotlines via email or telephone for other general, general inquiries about any planning department functions and operations. That's really all I have unless anybody has any questions.
Anybody have any questions? And that looks like Steve.
Just a quick one, Bonnie. Looking ahead, when do you think we'll get back to regulars? Is there any plan or projection of when we might get back to regular planning commission meetings?
Um, we don't have a timeline for that right now, but we are working on what that might look like when we get back at City Hall. You know, we'll probably need to make provisions for physically separating people in accordance with the physical distancing requirements and things like that. We don't have a timeline though as yet, but I know we're all anxious to get there.
John?
I just want to comment that on the news this weekend, there were several city council meetings about access to the beach, mainly Huntington Beach. And they, the city councils met in their normal chambers with separation in the audience and they were four feet apart, but it is starting to happen already with other cities.
Yes.
Anybody else? All right.
And before, excuse me, Chair, before moving on, we do have a public speaker listed for this item. Howard Redsky, I'm not sure if I see him in the list though of people that have checked in.
Okay.
Wait, is it for public comment?
Correct.
Are we there yet?
We're not at public conduit for items, not on the agenda, but we, we are, this is a ceremonial presentation. It's item 1A. I assume it's appropriate for public comment on, since it's an item on the agenda. What do you say, Trevor?
Sure.
If Howard's on.
Okay, is he on? Can you find him?
I don't see him on the list unless Alex knows any, something I don't.
Well, let's see, maybe we can, we can put him in. If he shows up, we can put him in under 2A, under general comments for items on to the agenda. So that takes us, we'll move on now to item 1B. That's the staff update on the Woolsey Fire rebuild process, and that's Richard, I assume. There he is.
Good evening, Chair Jennings and members of the commission. If I could have my next slide, please. To date, we've approved 228 fire rebuilds. And what you see here is the breakdown of that 228 number. And that 228 represents single-family residences only. There are additional structures that have been approved, such as a, we have a couple multi-family projects we've approved for reconstruction as well as accessory structures like garages, barns, outhouse, fences, or landscaping. If I may have the next slide as well, please. This slide represents the types of projects and the numbers of projects we've been seeing. As you can see, we're seeing a bit of a slowdown as, since we've gotten through the majority of the applications. What we've primarily taken in lately have been administrative plan review type applications. And even with the remote operations, we are still taking in projects and we'll continue to do that. I anticipate that we'll see a couple more this week. I've met with a few folks via email and online or conference calls to go over possible submittals. If I may have the next slide as well, please. We continue to implement the fee waiver program. To date, we're coming close to $2.6 million in fees waived per the city council's direction and the ordinance that they approved. Next slide, please. These numbers here represent the numbers for our building and safety department of what they've been doing. So far, we're still only at two homes completed. We haven't had any more final inspections. However, the number of permits has increased. We're at 94 permits that have been issued and 71 projects are going through the plan check process. And if I may have the next slide, please. And once again, just a reminder to anyone who is having a hard time receiving our notices through the mail because they're not at their address or changing addresses, if they're moving between different properties. We can always notify you via email if you give us your contact information and that would be sent to Kathleen Stecco in our department, which is kstecco@malibu city.org. Or also just give us a phone call on our planning hotline. That's the city hall number and extension 485, and we can also take your information that way as well. I'm available for any questions if there are any. Thank you.
Any questions, commissioners? Yeah, Steve.
Rich, real quick, Richard. Early on in this process, we had sort of requested that for these homes that are being built outside the like-for-like or like plus 10%. What are the size of these things that they're proposing? And you were going to get us something. Any chance we'll ever see that?
Yes, it's just honestly, we haven't, we've been capturing the data. I just haven't had a chance to compile it with all that's going on, but we have been collecting that so that we can present that to you. And I think also the other body that might have been interested in it as well, the planning commission.
Okay, so we'll see it when do you think?
I honestly don't know. I'm sorry, but we'll try to wrap it up for you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you, Richard. That includes the item 1B. We're now on item 2A, which is communications from the public. Matters not on the agenda. Did that gentleman show up that wanted to speak on the?
I, I do not see him, but we do have two other speakers, Jonathan K. and Craig Hill.
Okay, fine. Let's take them in that order.
Okay. Mr. K., you may begin. I'm not hearing or seeing him.
I don't see him on the list.
Should we move on to?
Well, let's go on with Craig and if he shows up, we'll stick him in. Go ahead, Craig.
Hi, everybody. Hope you're well. I'll try to be quick here. The council just increased appeal fees by 50% despite each having noted that it would have no appreciable effect towards reducing the stated staff cost per appeal. A past council had decided that the main point of the fee was to deter frivolous appeals and that appeals should be readily available to anyone who has a legitimate right. Here, the only rationale advanced by staff was that fees had to be increased to save the taxpayers a few thousand dollars total. Meanwhile, staff also reported there's $18 billion worth of taxable property in Malibu on which nearly $12 million in property taxes paid. So the fee increase won't affect that number in the least. Last year, the commission generated three appeals brought by residents and three others brought by deep commercial or institutional pockets. $500 was already a significant amount in at least three of those cases. But now if the $750 deters even a single fixed income senior, for example, from standing up for their rights, that will be their personal disaster as the council whistles past the graveyard. There are implications for both staff and the commission about increasing the stakes for potential appellants. In any legal proceeding, there are places in the process where more or less discretion can be exercised by authorities. To illustrate with a rough analogy, when the three strikes laws in mandatory minimum sentences were promulgated in the 80s and 90s, the stakes were raised for defendants. The effect was to remove discretion from the judge who had to send someone to prison on the third strike, even if it was just for stealing a pizza, and to shift more discretion to the police who knew that a third-strike arrest could have a disproportionate effect. When the stakes were raised, discretion was shifted to the front lines. That's what this 50% increase has done. You all are closer to the front lines than is the council. So for staff, there's now more onus on fully integrating the concerns of neighbors and any conceivable appellants. Too often, it seems the attitude has been, well, we sent them a card and they didn't reply. Well, recognized in an application is as much about the neighborhood as about the applicants. And please be more proactive in working with all the parties from the start to anticipate those potential issues. And for the commission, this now means that you can't assume that a aggrieved party can just bump your decision up to the council. This was council saying to you in effect, don't send it to us unless it's really important that within your discretion, you must either find in favor of the underdogs, so you have an appellant who can afford it, or if you're finding in favor of deep pockets, you'd better support your decision well so that underdogs don't end up feeling deprived of due process. In other words, to wrap it up here, the stakes just got higher for repellents, which means they just got higher for all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Let's take, any other speakers, Kathleen?
No, not at this time.
Okay, well, if they show up, let me know and we can, we can put them in. We're at, at planning commission and staff comments now. John, you want to start?
Okay, first I want to comment on Craig's comment, and that is that it's my understanding, having watched the meeting, that the city council did not raise the appeal fee. They put it off because it was not on the agenda and suggested anywhere from whatever to $750. But it still has to come back to the city council in the fee, in the fee schedule. The other point there should be, since I've been an appellate several times, is I believe personally that if you win, if the city was wrong or the planning commission was wrong, you should get your feedback. But that's another point. Now, on comments, my question would be, the city council changed our decision, our CDP, on the temporary skate park after it expired as, as an appeal item. So I wondered when it was scheduled to come back to us.
Bonnie?
The city council approved a skate park design. They did not alter the CDP. There is a CDP amendment that is being processed to address some additional landscape screening that the council agreed to implement in response to concerns about, in response to concerns about the, from the neighbor property owner. That'll come back to you sometime in the next month or two.
Before the project's finished?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Yes, Steve?
Okay, I got a couple. Do we have any, you know, every meeting, we have these people that are trying to get in that apparently don't show up when they're, do we understand why they're having that problem? I'm just, I mean, the objective here is to make this as easy for people to use as we can. I'm just wondering why people are getting locked out or shut out or quit, whatever the story is.
And I'd ask Craig if we could unmute him. He had the good experience that he could share if, if you wanted to hear that, Steve.
I would just, I would encourage anybody that has had difficulty signing up to speak and actually being able to speak to please contact anybody in the planning department and we will get you connected to IT if necessary and/or walk you through the instructions to be able to do it. We've had, for the most part, pretty, pretty good success with this. We've had a case or two where people were not there when we called upon them to speak, but for the most part, people seem to have figured it out. The system's not perfect, that's for sure. And if we need some additional instructions on the website and things like that, we can certainly provide them.
John? John?
Well, I, I tried to speak at the last city council meeting and I was able to get, get my place reserved to speak. But I was never able to join the meeting after that. And I tried six times. So it's not that, you know, seeing how it's been in four or five of these meetings, it's not intuitive, I'll tell you that.
Maybe, um, maybe we can come up with a way to, to, to sort of dry run the thing at, at some point. Maybe IT can, can, can set up just a, 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 a process by which we can, we can try and try to make it screw up and, and see if we can't figure out how to fix it on the fly. I don't know. Chris, you have a comment?
Yeah, one thought is, if, so John was able to register, if he could give his phone number at the time he registered, then for example, his name comes up instead of the commission or the council, whoever is trying to find a name, they could at least call that number back or something. I mean, just, just as a backup because it seems like the other two speakers had a similar issue. And if they'd given a number, somebody could have called him and bridged him on just as a, as a workaround.
Good idea. Steve?
And I, back to Bonnie's comment, as opposed to waiting for them to call us, why don't we try and go out and reach to some of them? Okay? why don't we try and go out and reach to some of them? Okay. And, and you know, talk, give a call to the people who couldn't get in, find out what happened. That may give us some insight in terms of what the problems are and maybe give us a way to help fix it.
Trevor?
Bonnie, maybe we can, I give them one point of contact. They should either call or email. Um, we, we can put that out there. And if anyone has specific people who have had trouble getting through, um, please email. Do you want to have them send it to the commission comments? Bonnie, would that be a good address for anyone who's had trouble? So we know who we can contact?
Trevor, we got a list of people who couldn't get in. Why don't we go after them?
Bonnie?
Where's the list?
Yeah, uh. Yes.
The, the Trevor had asked a question as to what the point of contact should be.
Um, I think, yeah, that you, you can send it to planning commission comments. That would be fine.
All right, somebody else had something about Steve. Did you have a further comment?
We, 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 there were at least one person tonight. There were a couple of people last meeting that couldn't get in. It is a, we should contact, I, I would like to see us outreach to them, see if we can learn something that may help.
That's a good idea. We, we can reach out to those people if we have their contact information to see if they just dropped out or if they had trouble getting actually in.
And I'll just point out again, Craig Hill on the line had that problem before. If we unmute or we get that now or follow up later, whatever the choice is, cheer Jennings.
We can follow up later.
Yeah, let's do that.
Sounds good.
Um, okay, so um, that's planning commission uh, comments. Have you have staff comments? Yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, that, sorry, I just, I did have a few. Um, yeah, so first off, I just want to acknowledge, you know, with everything going on with COVID, what's going on locally at the state level, countrywide, worldwide. Um, just thanks everyone for, for, for working with things like this. Um, I do want to point out something fun. It kind of makes my head look all weird and um, this background thing. And you got a new magic trick. Watch, nothing. There's paper and then it disappears. Isn't that pretty cool? Huh. So something to try with your kids. I don't know. Um, otherwise, um, I did get some input from Marty when I talked to her on um, a project we're looking at for this meeting. Um, her input was that there's no real kind of personal connection when the, the public connects without being able to be seen. Um, her thought was that it would be good to allow the video to come through. Um, so that was one observation. Another question she had was, you know, it, that, and that makes it a little more like the real experience that, that the presenter can, can have with, to connect with us. Um, another thought was, you know, the paper that's often distributed during the meetings. Is there a parallel to that? Is there any way for, you know, someone uh, to, to get in something kind of last minute? I'm assuming it would go say through Kathleen, but I just wanted to call that out. And then uh, I'm, I'm also curious if there's any talk of once we get past this, this kind of COVID shutdown, is there an intention or has anyone spoken of having this as being kind of a uh, almost a monitor next to the podium so that we could continue to have public comment coming through this media while we get back to a true public session? Could be another way to hybridize a, a return to normal where maybe it's only planning commission onsite um, and the selected speakers, but we could still get public comment, I should say, those representing a given project onsite. And then others could still give public comment through this media to cut down on, on, on the, uh, kind of the number of people there. Um, and then in the, in the process for submissions, and oh, Bonnie, you said we're missing that face to face. Um, have we made a concerted effort to move towards an all kind of digital process? Do we still have reams of paper moving around? I know other cities have kind of gotten away from all paper to not risk kind of carrying something which could carry some virus. So just curious on that one. And that was it.
Uh, Steve?
Just a couple of quick ones. One, uh, just short-term rentals have come back on my radar screen this week. I got a couple of calls. Uh, and apparently what's happening is with restaurants and bars closed, the short-term rental concept seems to be much more attractive to a lot of these people. And, and I have not seen it, but I was told that, that Airbnb is sort of advertising come to Malibu because it's a safe place to be. Uh, you know, it's, it's just something we're going to have to take a serious look at. I know Trevor believes that uh, the, the LA County State Home Order prevents us from regulating Airbnbs, but he hasn't checked with them. So that's sort of an opinion without any kind of confirmation. I think it's something we should take a look at. And then finally, the recent budget meeting, uh, you know, and I understand the budget is tight and all those kinds of things, but and a bunch of initiatives that the citizens have chased down over time were sort of put on hold. And some of those I understand, but one that I think is, is causing a lot of concern in, in the community is this one on dumpster covers. Because, you know, without those covers, basically what we're doing is encouraging people to leave them open, getting rats, using poison to kill the rats, and then going out and killing the environment that we depend upon. So if, if you're concerned with that issue, I would suggest you may want to contact your city council member and let them know that that's something that I do think we should continue to, to chase down.
Okay, I'm going to go to David. Got anything?
Um, I'd just like to echo what was just said about the short-term rental ordinance. I spoke before the call to Bonnie and Trevor, and I've had um, inquiries as well about when that subject will be taken up again by the appropriate, I assume it's us, the planning commission. Um, the response I got in our call a little while ago was that that we're waiting for the city council to direct us to take it up again, if I understood correctly, Bonnie and Trevor. And if so, I'm wondering what we need to do to get that direction to go forward with it.
So Bonnie and Trevor, you want to respond?
Yes, um, regarding short-term rentals, um, the, the council had and the city manager had um, concluded that it would be better to postpone these legislative items where there could be or it's expected that there would be a lot of public participation to um, ensure that there were no barriers to public participation and everybody could easily um, speak at the meeting and participate. Um, so if, if there's a desire to move that forward uh, under the virtual meeting scenario, speaking to city council is, is the recommended route for that. And I would just remind everybody that there was an attempt to put in place um, an interim ordinance that would have allowed, would have created some additional tools for enforcement and avoiding nuisances and some of the problems that um, some people have experienced with party houses and noise and things like that. Um, the council elected not to do that. So we, at this point, are in a position of relying on enforcement of noise and um, party and uh, social distancing problems uh, from the sheriff.
Okay, um, I want to add, I want to echo, Trevor, I'll let you go.
Sure. I, I want to add that that if there are gatherings or parties happening at these houses, that does violate the county stay-at-home order and you should report that directly to the sheriffs that we, you can't have that. And so um, the sheriff's the ones to directly contact on that. Also, the, she's going through the budget process and I'm going through their work plan right now. So we may get more direction from them um, independently about when they want to bring this back and especially uh, the direction on legislative items. If they want to do that virtually or if they want to hold off for a little bit, making that decision, hopefully we'll get some more direction um, at these next meetings. Also, to confirm from earlier, my understanding also is that the fee for the appeal is not um, gone up at this point. That's part of what's being considered right now.
Okay, I want to add just a couple of things. I want to echo what Chris said about uh, about shifting into uh, an electronic submission process. I think that would really, I know the budget's tight and it would take some money to do that. It's been on the table for a long time. Is there anything that you can report, Bonnie, on the, uh, on the possibility of moving into an electronic submission process?
Um, we're, we sort of have a, a foot in both uh, places right now. We are working with applicants on um, taking in recent middles and fire rebuild applications on a virtual basis. Um, as a kind of a stopgap measure for now. So it's giving us some insights into um, troubleshooting and things like that. So um, it's something that we're still aspiring to, but we're not, we're not all the way there yet.
All right. And I also want to echo what Chris said with regard to um, when we do move back into a live setting that we incorporate uh, this, this process that we've been going through now, where people who uh, might have an interest in an item, but don't want to have to schlep down to city hall and sit around and wait for a, a long period of time can um, wait at home and give their comments from home. I think that's an excellent idea. Somebody had their hand up. I think it was Steve. I'll go with him first.
Go back to it, David, and the short-term rental thing. Uh, Bonnie, if there's a message you can send to the city council from the, the, is the commission want this to move forward? I'd like to vote, take my vote. I'd like to see it start moving forward. I think this has been dragging on for a long time. And then in addition to that, you know, what the city council voted on last time was to basically have us construct an ordinance that mirrored the Santa Monica ordinance. So it seems to me that we've got a fairly narrow set of objectives that we've got to achieve, what comes back to the planning commission. And we should be able to do that even, you know, and with whatever uh, comments we're going to get from the public, but it's a fairly simple process and we should be able to at least get that going. Then send it to the city council and let them do the debate up there.
Okay, and Chris?
Thanks. Um, let's see. So the last couple of things. Um, but uh, oh, so one of the thought just in terms of when we, uh, when we get to larger items, assuming that we're still kind of stuck in this format or some hybrid of this format, how do we, how do we manage contributing minutes? You know, normally the person has to be in the room. They just have to be connected. Maybe Trevor, if you can add, and then I got one more thing.
Uh, Trevor, you want?
Yeah, at this point, that's just a, 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 a protocol that we use. We, we're not allowing the donation of minutes at this time. I mean, this is some long-term situation. Maybe we can work on something, but um, we're, we're not dealing with that. It's just, it, it's not feasible uh, the way we're doing it with, with it right now. Um, part of the problem too is that, you know, short-term rentals, it might seem simple to some, but we, we had like 80 or more speakers last time. So that one in particular is, is uh, going to be, it, it has a potential to be a, um, a challenge technologically, but um, we'll, we'll take the plunge if the council wants us to go there.
Agreed. And, and the other thing I wanted to add, sorry, to, to follow in both what David and Steve said was I do also put my hand up to, to hear that as soon as possible. And um, the last bit there is just, it seems to me that, that we turn to the sheriff, but I've, I've heard at least anecdotally, there hasn't been much um, kind of bearing given from them. Maybe if we as a city could put in some type of an emergency measure saying there are no Airbnb or, you know, there are no short-term rentals allowed where you go beyond uh, families participating in the event, something like that, just so the sheriff has something that can be enforceable because the feedback I heard was there was nothing to enforce and that's it for me.
Trevor, you got your hand up. You want to respond to that?
Yeah, that, that order is enforceable. So they absolutely can enforce it. Um, we, we've had ongoing discussions with the sheriff. We have another one coming up. Uh, as you may know, the, the head of the local sheriff, um, he has been changing a few times, but they do their best. Um, as we have new people come in, we, we do um, speak with them about these issues. So we'll, we'll bring it up again.
Okay, John?
I'd like to uh, second or third Steve's idea of uh, going to the council and asking them to bring it forward to us. I do not remember a vote by the council not to bring it to us. I remember a vote to send it to us, uh, send an ordinance to us based on Santa Monica. Now, this is uh, you know, the third go-around on this uh, ordinance and uh, the council was very specific. So I, I for one don't feel that we, we have the ability to change an ordinance dramatically and uh, all the input we get, we're sort of in a situation where we should follow their instructions and handle the minutia rather than the, the solution. So I think it's entirely possible that we can do it uh, sooner than later. We do have an election coming up this year and if we wait too long, uh, the opposition to short-term rentals or the short-term rental people themselves, we're going to come up with an initiative and we're going to lose our ability to have any control over anything.
Okay, this is, uh, this is all well and good, but you know, try and keep in mind that, that the work program is directed by the city council, not by us. They tell us what to do, not the other way around. You have uh, staff comments, Bonnie?
Um, I really don't have anything else to add. Um, we do have uh, one appeal item coming up um, to city council on May 26th. That is the uh, Paseo Portola item. Um, I think that is it for my announcements. Thanks.
Okay, fine. Uh, that will conclude item two B. We'll now move on to the consent calendar, which is
Excuse me, Chair.
Yes.
I just, no, that's okay. I just wanted to let you know that staff is trying to reach the uh, people that had signed in to see if they are uh, experiencing technical difficulties to see if they can uh, resolve those.
Okay, thank you. And if they do get resolved, we can, you know, it's not exactly an overwhelming agenda tonight. So we, we'll, we'll put them in, uh, if you'll let me know when they sign on and we'll see if we can get their comments.
Will do. Thank you.
Uh, all right. So the next item Kathleen is going to be the consent calendar. Uh, this is item, uh, items three B, one and two. Uh, first of all, are there any commissioners who want to pull an item from the consent calendar?
I'd, John?
John?
I could pull three B, one and three B, two.
Okay, um, well, I guess that boots the question of whether there's somebody in the audience who wants to pull anything. All right, let's, that takes us to uh, item three B, one, which is a de minimis waiver, 19009. This is for the property at 6755 Doom Drive. It's basically a uh, uh, change in the uh, in the on-site wastewater treatment system. Uh, John, do you have a question or do you need a full staff report? What's the issue?
I just have a very quick comment and it probably will turn into a question, but I don't need a staff report. In this case, we're asked to approve an onsite wastewater tr- system. And we don't, do not, we were, we're not told what size the house is or what size the guest house is. So I, I have no way of knowing why we're increasing it to 3,600 and 34 gallons. Uh, I don't need to know a lot, but what that is is going towards is, uh, I would like to remove the word on page one where we're talking proposed accessory dwelling unit. Because as far as I'm concerned, we don't have accessory dwelling units, especially if we don't know the size. And if, if this proposed building, which I have never, you know, it's hard to judge anything that's just proposed without knowing what it is, um, could exceed the size of accessory dwelling unit or could have other things that make it not an accessory dwelling unit. So I'd like to just change that to dwelling unit. Um, or, or a guest house or whatever you want to call it. But in the future, uh, the reason why I do this, in the future, if we go to enforce anything to do with accessory dwelling units before we even pass the law or that we're done before we pass the law and they didn't exist, I think we're going to have a problem. And it's just a word.
Commissioner Mazza, um, a couple of things to address your comments. Um, first, by approving the wastewater system, that does not in any way approve anything else on the property that will um, require review and approval and entitlement, just like uh, any other development. So you don't need to worry about uh, approving a wastewater system or in this case, receiving and filing the approval of the wastewater system. Um, automatically approving any other development on the property. And then the second thing is that um, you may recall back when the last time we discussed uh, the accessory dwelling unit ordinance with you, it's been some time now because of uh, these various unforeseen delays out of our control, the wildfire and now the pandemic. Um, one of the major issues that we're addressing in our ordinance is a change in terminology from second dwelling unit or second unit to accessory dwelling unit or ADU. So currently our code does allow for ADUs. They're just known as second units. So it's not that the, this address is something that isn't currently allowed. Um, second units are allowed. They just have to be properly permitted.
Yeah, but my point is, when we heard
Hold on, do we, do we have any public speakers on this? We should open the public hearing before we get into deliberations on it.
We do not have any public speakers sign up.
Um, the point I want to make is when we heard accessory dwelling units before, and this granted was the prior state law, there was a maximum of 1,200 square feet and the city chose, we chose 900. And that does not apply to what's in existence now. You can have a 5,000 square foot one if you want. You just got to call it something else. So that's why this is, seems like semantics, but in the future it won't be. The second thing is we're, we're expected to approve uh, onsite wastewater system when we have no idea what it's going to serve. And so that is dependent upon the size. So I, I would just like to have some idea, is this a So I, I would just like to have some idea, is this a two thousand square foot house with a nine hundred square foot accessory dwelling unit? Or is it a nine thousand square foot house, well, you know, et cetera? Um, because that's a bearing on what's being approved here. Why is it, why is it one of the largest systems we've seen?
Okay, let me just make one comment before you go. If, if you look at the history of these, this particular type of, of system, this micro septic tank, these, uh, these tanks of, in the thirty-six hundred gallon range, we've been approving routinely up and down. And I, when I looked at it, I thought, oh my God, that tank is huge. It turns out that's apparently the size of the tank that this system requires. Apart from that,
What I'm saying is how, how do we know that? We were asked, and item got continued tonight. We were asked to approve a rather large house with a fifteen hundred gallon tank.
That's right, we were. Trevor, you had a comment?
Yeah, I was just hoping we could, uh, take disclosures, open and close the public hearing.
Yeah, okay. Um, so let's do that. Are there, are there any disclosures? Let's go, Steve?
No.
Chris?
None.
Uh, David?
No.
John?
No.
Me? No. Okay, so let's, let's, uh, let's get a let's get a brief, uh, staff report on this. We're going to do this.
Sure. Good evening, Chair Jennings and members of the planning commission. And the item you have before you tonight is for the project located at six, seven, five, five Doom Drive. The de minimis waiver had previously been received and filed to the planning commission on December third, twenty nineteen. The revised de minimis waiver before you tonight is to modify the location and the size of the septic tank. Um, the septic tank is supposed to be relocated from the side yard to the rear yard. Um, this is a very brief, uh, staff report, but that concludes my presentation. Should you have any questions, I'm available for comment.
Okay, thank you. But it appears there might be a question. Chris?
Yeah, I just want to point out, it looks like the architect is on the call. If we did have some questions to direct him, if that would help. I just want to make that observation first.
Okay. Um, so we've had the staff report, Rob, we're gonna, we're gonna open the public hearing, see if there are any public speakers. Kathleen, have you got any public speakers?
We do not at this time.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing and we're back at the commission table. Steve?
Real quick, and I, and I, I tend to agree with John. If, if we knew the size of the house, it would just make it make me smarter as I go through and do these things, right? I mean, could you, John's right, the, the six thousand square foot or whatever it was on Colony Drive had a fifteen hundred square foot tank. And you sit back and say, was that right? Is this comparable to what we're doing someplace else? So listing the size should not be a big issue and I think it would help us get, make better decisions.
Chris?
I, I just wanted to call out on the approved, um, sustainability, environmental health check document that was provided on, signed off on March twenty-fifth. It lists the number of bedrooms and, and fixture units. Did you guys see that presentation? John, did you notice that in the, um,
No.
In the PDF, it's page twenty-two. I don't know where it falls in the paper. Um, but it'll, it should be just after, there'll be a cover page, which is environmental health review referral sheet. The page after that has a stamped diagram of the layout and it lists the bedrooms and fixture units for the single-family guests and pool houses.
Well, rather than look that up, is it, can you just give us an approximate size?
Well, a- all it says is four bedrooms for the house, fifty-seven fixture units, one bedroom for the guest house, nineteen fixture units, one bedroom for the pool house, nine fixture units. It does not s- put anything in that document about the size of the, of the, uh, structure.
Okay, do we have any kind of formula that tells us what a fixture unit means?
Mazza, we have, we, we have an entire environmental health department that is highly specialized. This is a very technical field and there are a lot of different scenarios for how this all works. Uh, there's a, a wide variety of systems that get used, so it's not as simple as, you know, one fixture unit equals so many gallons or whatever. There's, there's a lot of different parameters. So I, this, this is a situation where you need to as difficult as it might be, trust the environmental health staff and understand that this does not, um, allow any other development on the site. It, y- all of the development on the site still has to comply with all of the zoning standards.
I, I totally understand that. It's, it's just a mystery to me how you can know how many fixture units there are and not know the size of the house. Uh, it's just, it's a mystery to me. What happens if it comes to us and we say, oh, that's a, a, a uh, too big, we'll make it smaller. Uh, you know, have they submitted plans or haven't they? That's all I need to know. I don't care. I don't want to nitpick here. I just want to know, does somebody on the staff know about how big the house is? I'd be able to think a thousand feet.
I'm gonna go with Trevor here. He has his hand up.
Okay, there's, there's five findings that need to be made for this. None of them deal with house size. I mean, these are all about the type of system where it's located on the property. Those are the findings that, that Bonnie is making to approve this de minimis waiver. So size really shouldn't be in the staff report and it shouldn't be considered by the commission as it's looking at whether to make this a full coastal development permit. All we're dealing with is the system itself and where it's located.
This is a fire burnout. This was a, the, the de minimis waiver procedure was put in place by the city council in order to allow people to have some mechanism of improving their, their, the onsite wastewater treatment systems because they didn't want to penalize people who wanted to improve the onsite wastewater, uh, treatment systems by making them go through a full CDP process. That's what this whole thing was about.
Okay, so that would be true if this was a, a hundred and ten percent house. Is it a hundred and ten percent house?
I have no idea, but when it comes up, you get to decide whether you approve the size of the house or not. And the size of the septic system has nothing to do, it doesn't obligate you in any way to approve a house that you don't otherwise want to improve.
Okay, I just, I just, I will drop that. I, I just assumed that somewhere along, somewhere in the staff would analyze size versus size, but that's okay. Now, the second question is, um, this, this, uh, can we change the language to get rid of accessory dwelling units since it does not exist in our codes? Can we make it, uh, uh, whatever the guest house thing was, um?
This is a receive and file item. This has already been approved by me. It's being reported to you. So, um, the short answer is no, it's not an error because, uh, we use a lot of different terminologies for things. It might say guest house, it might say second unit, it happens to say accessory dwelling unit here. Um, so this is, it's been approved and that it's very clear what that means. It means the same as a second unit, so it, there's not a need to make a change to, to the approval.
Okay, I just want to remind you, one of our biggest problems on this commission is undefined terms, but that's fine with me. Now, the, the last question would be, this this is, this was signed on the twenty-third of April. Is, does the public have any ability to appeal this?
No.
Okay. So that's a question of, of, of Trevor, uh, the, as I understand the code, the municipal code, this, the public has the ability to appeal any decision by the planning director.
The, when the ordinance was put into place, the, um, the language was designed so that it's, uh, not locally appealable. Again, because these are, um, very straightforward projects and it's only appealable if it's within the appeal jurisdiction of the, um, coastal commission.
So the language in the municipal code that says any, any decision by the planning director may be appealed is, doesn't, doesn't count.
This is, this is in the, um, local coastal program.
Yeah, and we have to certify municipal code compliance, correct?
Oh my God.
Are you trying to appeal this project?
I'm not. I'm just making sure that we give enough notice in all cases that we follow the municipal code. A- a- at least it should be a day. I mean, it should be something. If the municipal code says you have to have, you have to have.
The way the de minimis waiver process was set up is to, um, notify the public by, um, placing this on the agenda. These are items, this is designed to address items such as, um, the construction of a septic system or minor alterations to a driveway for fire rebuilds only. This only applies to fire rebuilds. So that it has a streamlined process and, um, it, it wouldn't require a full public hearing before the planning commission. It's reported to the planning commission, it's agendized in order to allow an opportunity for anybody who has an issue with it to submit an objection in advance, so the commission can make a determination at this point where we are now, where it's being reported to make it a full public hearing, in which case then it would become appealable.
Okay, well, I'm not gonna nitpick, but, uh,
Yes, you got your hand up.
Makes no sense to me.
Yeah, ju- just to clarify, there's no, there's no additional rights or anything given to this applicant by having the, the ADU or the phrase accessory dwelling unit. There's, there's no diff- yeah, okay, okay, then I'm good.
Okay, so that's a receive and file. If there's no further action, we'll deem it received and filed and we'll go on to item three B two.
But I had a question. I'd asked if we move, could move this one to the end since I need to recuse?
Uh, yes, uh, okay, send, let's, let's, uh, let's take a motion to, uh, modify the agenda to move this item to the end.
I make that motion?
All right. No, no, I don't think you can make.
Chris, you can't make that motion.
I second.
Makes the motion and it's seconded by
David.
By David. All right, um, call a roll. Kathleen, please.
Commissioner Euring?
Yes.
Commissioner Wile?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mazza?
John?
You're muted.
You're muted, John.
Still muted. Commissioner Mazza, we can't hear you.
Press your spacebar.
There you go. I think I hear you now. Speak. Say something, John.
You have to hold it, you have to hold it down while you're talking.
Now we can.
Okay, I lost everybody, even your pictures, but I, do I have to hold this down, the whole meeting?
Just while you're talking.
Okay.
Okay, so your, your vote is being asked for, John, on this item?
Yes.
Um, Chair Jennings?
And yes. All right, so that item will be moved to the end of the agenda. That concludes the consent calendar such as it was. We're now off to, uh, item five. Uh, what have we got left? Five B. This is the coastal development permit fifteen oh sixty-nine and a site plan review and a demolition permit. This is for the property at two nine one four zero Cliffside Drive. Um, can we have a staff report, please?
Yes. Good evening, Chair Jennings and members of the planning commission. The item you have before you tonight is for the proper, project located at two nine one four oh Cliffside Drive for the coastal development permit number fifteen zero six nine, including site plan review number fifteen zero five seven and demolition permit number twenty zero zero four. Next slide, please. This, this slide demonstrates the vicinity map and aerial photograph for the project site and the surrounding area. The project site is located on the west side of Cliffside Drive within the Point Doom neighborhood. The subject site is bordered to the north, east and west by single-family residential development and the Pacific Ocean to the south. Next slide, please. The project includes the demolition of the existing three thousand four hundred and thirteen square foot single-family residence, the construction of a new six thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven square foot two-story single-family residence, the demolition of all existing hardscapes and replace, to be replaced with ten thousand five hundred and forty-four square feet of impermeable coverage, which will also include a new driveway and the concrete pool deck, new retaining walls not to exceed six feet in height, a new front yard access gate, construction of a new OWTS, a new pool and associated equipment, nineteen thousand two hundred square feet of new landscaping, a new side yard privacy wall not to exceed six feet in height, a water feature measuring ten square feet, nine hundred and twenty yards of non-exempt grading and including a discretionary request for SPR to allow for construction above eighteen feet in height up to twenty-four feet in height. Next slide, please. Pictured here is the site plan, which includes the new driveway, the proposed single-family residence and various site improvements. Next slide, please. Here's the view corridor exhibit that was provided by the applicant. This exhibit demonstrates the twenty-one foot four inch required view corridor. Next slide, please. Here we have the first floor plan, which includes an enclosed one-car garage and an additional three car, a three-car carport, um, which meets the definition of sixty percent enclosed, which, uh, meets our requirements for enclosed parking. Next slide, please. Here's the second floor plan, um, which as you see also illustrates the upper level deck. Next slide. Pictured here are the south and east elevations, highlighting the total height of the building at twenty-four feet. Next slide. Here are the north and west elevations. Next slide, please. Pictured here are the site photographs. The top left photo is the property facing south. The top right photo is the property facing north towards the front yard. And the lower middle photo is also facing north, but picturing the rear yard of the property. Next slide, please. Here are the project renderings. The top rendering, um, shows the property facing south. Um, as you can see, you can see the one enclosed garage and the three carports, which is sixty percent enclosed. The lower, um, rendering shows the rear yard, including the pool and various other site improvements. Next slide, please. Um, in conclusion, staff recommends the adoption of resolution number twenty fifty, approving coastal development permit number fifteen zero sixty-nine um, with the inclusion of the fire hazard and lighting deed restrictions, which were inadvertently omitted from the resolution. Um, I'm available for any questions, as well as the applicant and architect are available as well. Thank you.
Okay, Jessica, what are we doing with the omitted, uh, resolution language? How are we going to be able to pass the resolution without knowing? Are these the standard provisions?
Yes, they are the standard conditions.
Okay. Um, all right, so let's go with, uh, ex parte disclosures. We'll start with you, David.
I, uh, visited the site and, uh, walked around.
See anything that wasn't in the staff report?
Did not.
John?
Uh, I visited the site. I talked to the property manager who didn't seem to know much and I didn't see anything that I didn't see in the staff report.
Steve, anything from you?
I walked around the site, didn't see anything. It wasn't in the staff report.
Chris?
I have no disclosures on this one.
Okay, I did a drive-by and I had some conversations with, uh, uh, Joseph, uh, not Joseph, uh, with, um, one of the staffers and, uh, uh, didn't learn anything that wasn't in the staff report. Um, all right, so let's, uh, i- if there are no questions, let's open the public hearing and get a presentation on this. Kathleen?
I'm showing now members of the public, um, wish to speak and Ja- Jamie Harnish and Christine Rains, um, of the applicant team are available for questions. I'm not sure that they wanted to make a formal presentation.
Uh, okay, how do we determine whether they want to make a formal presentation or not? Um,
It's my understanding that they were available for questions.
Okay.
Unless noted otherwise.
All right, then there's nobody else in the public that wishes to, or that nobody else has signed in to, to speak, right?
That is correct.
All right, we'll close the public hearing at this point and we'll come back to the commission table.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve the project as staff recommends.
Jessica, could you, um, re, just, uh, for clarification, remind us what the changes to the reservoir?
Yes, um, we will be adding the standard conditions for fire hazards and the lighting deed restriction.
That's the dark sky light and stuff, right?
Correct.
So that's a requirement for scenic areas that the applicant recorded deed restriction and then same thing for the wildfire hazard waiver.
Correct.
Those are standard conditions.
I'll second John's motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded as a discussion.
Yeah, I did, I did have a couple of observations I wanted to call out if I could.
Sure.
Sure.
Cool. Okay, so in, um, I didn't, it wasn't a big deal to me in kind of the staff report, but in what we actually document, there's something that contradicts itself. So, um, if you look at page three of twenty of the resolution number, um, what is contradictory to me is that it says proposed development will not be visible from cliffside as part of our finding, uh, uh, B two. But we also say that we're putting a view corridor because it's visible from cliffside. So it seems like that language, I wasn't comfortable seeing contradictory statements, so it seems like we should probably change the language. I wasn't comfortable seeing contradictory statements, so it seems like we should probably change the language saying, not that it's not visible, but rather that, um, the proposed development, albeit visible from Cliffside Drive, is addressing that issue per LIP. You know, does that, does that observation make sense?
Jessica?
Yeah, yes, um, that does make sense. I can make those adjustments in the resolution.
Okay, thank you. And there's similar, um, there's a similar contradiction in the, the staff report. I don't think that needs to be touched, because.
Which page in the reso? Sorry, Commissioner Marks, which page of the reso?
Three of twenty, uh, section B two, and, uh, the, the phrasing says the development will not be visible from cliffside. And then also, to clarify on that, cliffside is at one point stated as a scenic road, and then at another point stated is not a scenic road. So, um, so for example, right there, it's, will not be visible from cliffside and will not be visible from any scenic road, but in another part of the report, it says cliffside is a scenic road. So, um, I don't remember if that was in the, uh, reso also or only in the staff report, but just keeping things, um, tight on that, uh, would be preferred.
Okay, I can make those adjustments.
Um, okay, so first of all, before we go further, uh, the motion was yours. John, you're going to approve the, uh, the change that Chris suggests?
Yeah, I, I, I will amend my motion, uh, acceptance, uh.
And.
I have one question to ask.
Hold on just a second, and Steve, you're the second there, weren't you?
You, I'm, I'm okay with Chris's motion.
All right, great. Hold on just a second. Trevor, what, what's your problem?
Just wanted to clarify that what the change is going to be. It's gonna, instead of saying, instead of not visible, it says it will, um, not have significant adverse scenic or visual impacts, um, due to the project, right? That, that's what you're, that's the change you're looking to make here?
That sounds fair. I mean, because we're, we're making that view corridor to address the LCP requirements, so, uh, yeah, just as long as we're not saying it's not visible from a road it is visible from.
Because the finding you're making is that the project as condition will have no significant adverse scenic or visual impacts due to the required project modifications, landscape, or other conditions. So that while it's visible, it's, uh, not having a, a significant adverse impact due to the.
Perfect. Yeah, exactly.
And that's what, that's your motion, right, John?
That's correct. I.
Hold on just a second. I'm just trying to, just to check the boxes here. Steve, you're okay with that as well, right?
I'm on board.
Okay, now, John.
Well, I want to make sure that, uh, we have the standard forty-two inch front yard, uh, requirement, because it sounds like that language might be a little different, but we do have that in there?
Yes, it's included as it is in the project description. It notes, um, front yard entry gate not to exceed forty-two inches in height, um, the rest view permeable, as well as in the resolution.
And, and the fence too, right?
The front yard fence, correct, yeah.
Okay, so I, I accept all those changes.
Okay.
Hey, I, Chris? Yeah, sorry, I've got a couple more. The other one, um, I know from prior conversations that the qualified archaeologist being available after the fact, would the applicant mind if we kind of like, we have another, um, applications on the point for any, any grading, um, to have that archaeologist available onsite at the time? I know we put that as a condition, and Trevor, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we'd require that on other projects.
Which condition?
Uh, it's on page eight of twenty, condition twelve, cultural resources. It, it stated that if something is found, then the archaeology comes in. I think in the past, we'd said the archaeologist should be onsite at the time of, um, the, the excavation.
Commissioner Marks, we, um, if there is some reason to be concerned about the presence of cultural resources, if something's been identified in the cul- cultural resources report that is submitted for a project, then we often include that as a requirement to have the, um, the archaeologist present. Um, in this case, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Jessica, but there wasn't an indication, I don't think, of resources being present or a risk of that.
Correct. There was a, a phase one archaeology report submitted to the city, and that did not include, um, recommendations for any monitoring or anything like that.
Um, so, so in a situation like this, we would normally just use these two standard conditions. If you have concerns about, um, the presence of resources for some reason in the site, then that, you know, there would be a reason to add the requirement for a monitor.
Yeah, I'm, I'm by no means an expert there. I just recognizing kind of the location, I would imagine that, you know, ten thousand years ago is probably a nice place to live also, but I'd be, if no one else wants to second that, um, I'm good to let it go. So John and Steve, if you don't want to touch it, we'll move on. I, I got a couple more, though.
Go ahead, Steve, or Chris.
Okay, um, the other one is just, uh, condition fifty-five on page thirteen. Um, that total grading yardage verification, that includes historical grading, just to confirm, correct? And if so, just that's accounted for in that process?
I'm reading. So I'm just going to read over the condition really quick.
Sure, thank you. And just so everyone else knows, it's just asking that the total grading yardage verification certificate, uh, will be part of the grading plan.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and then the last bit is, um, it's, the best condition I could find is on page seventeen, uh, condition sixty-nine. Um, since we had such a long conversation on, um, a prior item, also on the bluff, albeit maybe, uh, you know, give or take a mile, uh, kind of down the street, um, I just have a little concern, you know, if and as the, um, cliffside erodes back, um, first thing it's going to hit is going to be that pool. Um, is there anything we'd need to add on condition sixty-nine? Um, since that's kind of closest to the bluff, you know, um, this is a condition, you know, th- this is some future state, be it twenty or sixty years down the road. I don't know, none of us know. Um, is there any need for us as a, as a commission where we would want to take a closer look at how that cliff face is eroding right there? Any concerns? And any concern, anything we'd want to add to that pool because of it? And I addressed that meaningly to John, if you'd be looking for any type of a friendly amendment there, if you see it as warranted.
The, the geotechnical review for the project, um, would have included, did include, uh, review for meeting all of the bluff top setbacks, so that's been, I, on the prior project, I think you're probably talking about the one with the emergency soldier piles that were put in.
Exactly.
That's a, that was, in that particular case, we had a, a development that was built a long time ago with, you know, clearly non-conforming setbacks. It was very close to the bluff edge. Um, here we've got a, a development that is meeting all of the current requirements for bluff top setbacks, so, um, assuming the bluff top setbacks are adequate as they are codified, um, there, we shouldn't have that same problem that, uh, the other property was experiencing.
Agreed, and I, I call it just because we spent quite a bit of time kind of at least thinking through what the whole coastline could look like, and I just don't want, I, I wanted to call it out just because we spent probably three hours on that between two meetings, so, uh, that's the only reason I bring it up.
John?
Chris, I, I wouldn't want to change the, because the, uh, geology along there is highly dependent upon whether the stratus horizontal or vertical.
Yeah.
Particular area, there've been almost no slides.
Okay, then I'm good. That was all I had, Joe, Commissioner, uh, Chair Jennings.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll call the roll, please. Thank you very much.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Euring?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Wile?
Yes.
Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you. That concludes item, um, five B, and now we're going to go back as soon as Chris Marks checks out.
I think we still have five C, don't we?
I'm sorry, five C is continued.
Continued.
Then wow, I'm out of here.
You are. Lucky dog. Bye.
All right, see you guys.
Commissioner Marks, can you explain why you're recusing yourself?
Oh, yes, I'm recusing because I live within five hundred feet of the applicant, and so, um, by Calipari law, I believe I have to step away. Thank you, guys.
Okay, bye-bye.
Bye.
We need you to actually check out.
Done.
No, you're not. There you go. Okay, so that brings us to item, uh, what is it? Three B two? This is an administrative coastal development permit amendment. This is number seventeen dash oh one four. It's an amendment to the project at two eight four six five via Acero. Can we have a staff report? Oh, you, you pulled this, John. I, I assume you want to.
No, I don't need a full staff report. The reason I pulled it is, uh, I believe there's been some changes in the situation on that lot. I have no problem with the fact that this is basically the same-sized house. Uh, but it's been, and so what I'd like, who's, whoever the staff member is, um, it's Adrian, I guess. One question would be, uh, as I understand it, the property directly behind this property has been bought by the MRCA as a parking lot and a trail, uh, connecting to a previously approved trail by the city behind the Streisand property. And therefore, we're now dealing with a park, and we have to deal with the park setback rules, uh, or at least discuss them. And then the other thing is that, uh, since it's viewable from, uh, Canaan, it appears to me that the house now, the way it's situated, is, uh, much more than thirty-five feet in cumulative height. So we may have to deal with the hillside ordinance, which wasn't covered in the staff report. So that, that's the only reason I would like to bring it back for discussion to clarify those items.
All right, where do you want to go with this, John? Do you want to make a motion, or would you like to have a staff report, or how would you like to proceed?
Adrian, can you address this?
I mean, yeah.
We should open the public hearing to take disclosures.
Uh, all right, well, let's let Adrian, uh, give us a staff report, then we'll take disclosures, and then we'll open a public hearing. Adrian?
Yes, yes, uh, uh, good evening, um, Chair Jennings and members of the Planning Commission. Uh, the subject item is an amendment to an administratively-approved coastal development permit approved in September of two thousand sixteen and extended to Sep- September, uh, two thousand and twenty-one. Soon after originally approved, the current owner, who had just purchased a property months before the original approval, uh, submitted the proposed amendment. While minor changes are proposed to each of the, uh, building footprints, the most obvious change is the architectural style from a more traditional pitch roof style to a more modern flat roof, um, architectural style. Uh, next slide. The property is located at the north end of Via Acero Street, a private street uh, that connects to Ramirez Canyon Road, another, uh, private street. Uh, just to address, uh, one of the questions or comment from, uh, Commissioner Mazza, um, the proposed development is, uh, cited, uh, more than three hundred feet from adjacent, uh, properties. Uh, so if the adjacent properties are changing ownership, uh, and are then, um, uh, maintained by a public agency for public land, uh, the proposed development will maintain, uh, more than the required hundred-foot setback, uh, per the code. Uh, the proposed development is also visible from Canaan Doom, and the scenic, uh, standards were uh, made as part of the original, uh, staff report. Um, however, um, the proposed development, uh, is, uh, being reduced in size. Uh, and so those scenic, um, those scenic requirements didn't, did not need to be made again for this project, for the amendment. Um, uh, to answer the question about hillside standards, uh, the proposed development is also cited on slopes flatter than thirty percent. Therefore, the residential hillside development standard did not apply originally to this project and, um, continues not to apply to the proposed amendments. Uh, next slide. The proposed, uh, total development square footage is approximately a hundred and twenty square feet less, uh, compared to the originally approved project. It maintains the same three buildings in approximately the same location and size. Uh, next slide. The site plan shows in green, uh, the proposed building footprints, and in red, the previously approved building footprints. Uh, next slide. Here is a close-up of the footprints. Again, the buildings are very close to their original shape and location. Uh, there are just some minor, uh, tweaks to, uh, the building footprints as stated before. Uh, next slide. Um, this exhibit shows the main residence, uh, particularly in yellow, the original second floor, and in green, the proposed second floor. The new second floor is located entirely within the second floor of the originally approved residence. And given the change in roof design uh, from pitch to a flat roof, all new areas over eighteen feet in height, uh, fit entirely within the envelope of the original, um, approved residence. Therefore, the proposed amendment did not result in a request for a site plan review, even though the original approval uh, did include a site plan review for development over eighteen feet in height. Uh, next slide. Um, this and the following exhibits show, uh, in three D and in simple geometric form, the originally approved second floor in yellow uh, versus a proposed second floor in blue. Um, and as you can see, the proposed second floor is much smaller than the approved second floor, and, um, if you go to the next slide, uh, when you overlap the two, you can see, um, that the proposed, um, second floor fits within the second floor of the original design. Uh, next slide. Um, since the amended is similar to the approved project and found consistent with the applicable code requirements, staff, uh, issue an approval for the project. As, uh, a reported item, uh, the Planning Commission may consider to receive and file or to request to have the, the item, uh, come back as a full public hearing. Uh, this concludes my presentation, and the applicant is available with the presentation.
Okay, we're going to do our disclosures now. Let's start with you, John.
I'm none.
David?
A while ago, when this was first on the agenda, I visited the site and spoke to a, uh, a part of the, a staff person from the, uh, expediter, but, uh, nothing that wasn't in the report.
Steve?
I visited the site when this originally came before us, however long ago that was, and did not go back this time.
And I have no disclosures. Okay, let's, uh, let's open the public hearing. But John, excuse me, wait a minute, before we do that, John?
Uh, I only have one last question, then I may just withdraw. Uh, Richard, I'm, is the, um.
Adrian.
I'm sorry, I can't see anybody, so I forget.
Okay.
I just didn't see you. Um, Adrian, is, is there any, uh, access on this property to Canaan?
Well, the property is immediately adjacent to Canaan, and there was an easement uh, that was dedicated on this property, uh, for other, uh, properties to take access to Canaan in case of an emergency. Um, the applicant has no plans to, uh, do any improvements on the property to facilitate that access, and there was also a condition with the original project, um, to, um, not do that, and, uh, I believe there's a deed restriction on the property as well regarding access.
So it could, could not open up the road. Uh, with that answer, with that answer, I'd like to withdraw my pulling the item and recommend receive and file.
Okay, so the issue is whether or not there's a motion to, uh, bring this matter back as, uh, as a full CDP, and there being no motion. Trevor, you look like you want to say something.
Yeah, do we open the public hearing? Uh, we need to do that before we take a motion.
Uh, okay, all right.
I think it's only the applicant. I don't know if the applicant still wants to speak if there's nobody asking to pull the item any further.
Yeah.
Well, let's, let's open the public hearing and find that out. Uh, Kathleen, are you around there?
I do see Don Schmitz is, um, has signed up, but I don't know if he wants to still.
Okay, uh, let's, let's open the public hearing and, and let's find out. Don?
Uh, yes, this is Don Schmitz, and, uh, if in fact, uh, uh, John's crossing his heart and say receive and file, then I don't need to take up any more of your time.
Okay, that's, thank you.
You see me, I just crossed my heart.
That, had there been no motion, the matter is received and filed. I think that includes our, concludes our agenda, does it not?
Yes, I move adjourned.
I'll second.
Second.
You want to have a roll call vote on that, or no? Let's just say what's, it's approved. Right of here, honestly.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
How do I get out of here? Kind of like get out of here.